Okay, on this meeting to order. Uh, roll call please. Dr. Brenner?
Here.
Dr. Katula?
Here.
Mr. Capital?
Here.
Dr. Schumacher?
Here.
Mr. Sefner?
Here.
Ms. Shiel?
Here.
Uh, who stands?
United States of America, the republic stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And will someone read the mission statement?
Certainly cultivating learners with high skills and experiences to enrich society.
Uh, and I believe we have some public comment. Uh, so someone is physically in the room and then we have a electronic submission, so. Karen?
Good evening. I'd like to reintroduce myself. My name is Karen Mason. My husband and I have two kids in addition to Matthew, in eighth and ninth grade. I had the opportunity in the past to discuss this board regarding the changes you implemented to the way my sons receive an education. At this time, I'm only going to address my freshman because his situation is critical. I'm here to tell you the system is failing that child. My son Matthew is a freshman. He's currently failing 50% of his classes, 50%. Some of them he failed both the first and second semester. As we had made clear to every teacher in the past, we as parents did not approve of the retaking of tests. In fact, in seventh and eighth grade, we forbid it. Matthew's grades improved dramatically. Matthew learns quickly that not doing the work with the retake was easier because he studied to the test, retaining nothing from the lessons to build on. If these lessons were the foundation of what was to come, the structure is already falling down. Matthew was offered remediation for the first semester of classes that he failed. It's just a glorified way to retake failed tests. Bravo on the workaround. Now we are here because the second semester is coming to a close. He had been offered this remediation again. This is how the first remediation went. Matthew was to read To Kill a Mockingbird. He read a few chapters, decides he doesn't care for the book, handed it in three weeks early. That should have been the red flag. We didn't even know he was reading the book and he handed it in three weeks early. He failed all the tests related to the book. He goes to remediate the ELA grade. He came home one day to use my computer because the link they gave him was blocked on school computers. Why, you ask? Because he was given the link for Spark Notes, a ClickNotes website. What did he learn? How to take another shortcut. I'm disgusted by the lack of support you received throughout the school year. These remediation opportunities were a waste of time. They're nothing more than a way for him to fix the grades on paper. They're nothing more than the college cram sessions we all have before finals. Hurry up and study to the test, spit the information back out, and you have a passing grade. They've learned nothing but your school district looks good. The recent email I received regarding the second semester is really what brought me to this breaking point. It addressed that 600 students were eligible for remediation, 600. That number is staggering and more importantly, embarrassing. I've made multiple attempts to get extra support for Matthew. Both myself and my husband could have easily helped her. Most of the time, I received nothing more than the canned answer of it's all available on Canvas. I don't have access to Canvas. Matthew would complete something, it would get submitted, and we wouldn't know if it was right or wrong. It was gone. There was zero homework assigned, even though he said he had nothing to do. He still had all these missed assignments, but we didn't know about them. Multiple times, Matthew has informed me that he's been called to the dean's office to talk about his grades. Have I been invited to any of these conversations? No. On more recent occasion, Matthew called me on his way to the dean's office, unsure as to why. He asked the dean. He was informed it was to discuss his grades. He called me back. I showed up like I was going to bail him out of jail because I wanted to be part of the conversation. In fact, Mrs. Pachetti, Matthew's counselor, was just leaving the office discussing the remediation for biology, a class I didn't even know he failed. You as a board and the district had a goal of partnership at home. That means including the parents in the support process. Homework for study guides on paper would have been simple enough to include myself or my husband in the process. We didn't even know he was reading To Kill a Mockingbird, never mind handing the book in three weeks early. You've missed the opportunity. Now I'm going to give you my reality. My son Matthew is 15. He will likely have to repeat much of his freshman year, which will likely impact his graduation goal. Matthew has made it perfectly clear to my husband and myself multiple times that when he turns 18, he wants to quit school because I can't stop him. That will make him 18 before he starts his junior year. His junior year. Let that sink in. His junior year. These words from my child's mouth send shivers down my spine. I can only hope that as champions of education you claim to be, it sends the same shivers down yours. I'm not going to sit quietly and allow the institution to fail, force this failing system on my sons. Matthew's a smart, motivated kid. It breaks my heart to see him lose all of his desire and motivation to learn anything and decide at 15 he wants to quit.
Uh, thank you for your comments. Nick or Mr. Travis? I mean, we can't have a conversation, oh. Yeah, we can't have personal conversations, but we do promise that someone will go back to. Okay, uh, we have another. Exact content that was submitted to us, I'm trying to please, so I'm going to read this. First, I'd like to thank Yorkville District for remaining open when many other school districts have gone to email. I appreciate the school district putting the health of our kids as top priority and the trust this will, and trust this will continue in the future. I took my child out of school initially in favor of eating on it because I didn't want to force him to cover his face for seven hours a day. After the first quarter, I put him back in school because he was missing out on the normal social interaction that all kids need to try. That being said, I recently asked my child if he has seen his teacher's face and he responded that he's seen her picture on the door on the way into the classroom. My son doesn't get to see his teacher or his classmates smile. The masks are dehumanizing our kids and it's not right. We didn't get to vote for the CDC officials that put the mask regulations in place. Your parents deserve to have a say in whether their child wears a face covering while at school. Kids get sick. They always have gotten sick. They will always get sick. Getting sick is what puts kids' immune systems to the test and makes them stronger. If you watch our kids at school on any given day, they are, they, they're touching door handles, common surfaces, and 100 different things that have terms on them, and then proceeding to adjust the mask as they are required to wear, transferring whatever's on the door handle to their face covering. How is this sanitary? Kids can, can't be expected to put on a new mask every time they touch one they're wearing, and when you touch a mask, if intended, its purpose is immediately defeated. Masks are not being normal. They do not block the particles of COVID or any other virus. They inhibit normal breathing and there are countless videos showing that they increase carbon dioxide levels. I implore everyone who hears this to do your research and stand up for our kids. At the very least, we deserve to know the board's plans for when kids can be unmuzzled and go back to their kids. Thank you, J. G. Guss. So we've asked Dr. Katula to just make a brief statement, statement on my skin and his expertise.
Uh, I'm sure it'll hear me okay. I'm going to desperately try not to be snarky about this response. So, uh, our hospital is very overwhelmed right now. As I said, when those epidemic numbers are going up, it's really smart things. Mask work, PPE works. It's that simple. I recognize that the letter has some things in there saying we're researching. I would encourage people to do their research. I think the best example is we can look at the flu. As everyone knows, we haven't seen any cases of the flu. This year, uh, there has only been one pediatric death in the entire United States from the flu. That's amazing. We are literally less than one ninth of the total number of flu cases this year. Why is that? Because we are mitigating viral diseases. To suggest that the masks don't work is just not true. If masks did not work, the simple answer is all the doctors, all the nurses, and everybody working at the hospital would be dropping COVID, which we are not saying thank God. So these systems do work. I stress to people over and over again, the mitigation works. These systems work. Does that mean that we can't get to a place of normalcy? No, we absolutely can get to a place of normalcy. If we look internationally, um, different countries, Israel, they're moving towards this, a situation where they have seen no progressive deaths over the last few weeks. That's amazing. We can get there. These things can be done. We just have to finish the fight on this. And when people talk about do kids get sick? Sure, kids get sick. Absolutely. And thank God again, kids don't have a big problem with COVID, but unfortunately, the more people who are affected, the more people get infected. Much like containing a fire, we have to make sure we limit the total number of people who are exposed, who get positive tests, and that spread the disease. We see light at the end of the tunnel. I hope everybody in here listens to me when we say, just continue the fight. It's a good fight. We've done a really, actually, I think our, our school administrators, the teachers, everybody working in this school has done an amazing job of making sure we keep our kids safe. Part of that is making sure we're wearing masks. I, I hope that answers the question, but again, the statistics are out there. If carbon dioxide was an issue on masks, I would never go have surgery because my surgeon would have too much carbon dioxide. That's not. Masks are safe. They work. We just have to finish the fight on this.
And as a reminder, as a school district, we are following the Illinois State Board of Education, which is aligned with by EPH and CDC. Um, so we also have guidelines that we're expected to adhere to. And I do believe, and I was commenting about standing up for kids. If you look at the school year we've had, look at the efforts, our staff, and our teachers, and the parent professionals, and our maintenance people, our teammates, and everybody's playing, we've stood up for kids, and we've done what's right in our community, worked really hard as a community to do it. But it's the Health Department, the Board of Education, all of our parents, all of our kids. It's been a hard year for everyone. But I do believe we've done what we've kind of for kids in the hardest situation we've been in recent history.
We now have a series of recognitions and celebrations.
We do. Some exciting times. So, uh, it's been a while since we've had a number of recognition to the board meet, but uh, we're going to start it out with one of our high school musicians. We've seen a natural honor. So I'm going to turn it over to uh, Victor Anderson. And this one will be virtual, if I'm correct.
All right. Hello. On behalf of Yorkville Music, my name is Victor Anderson, and it's my pleasure to acknowledge the achievement of the Yorkville High School music students that are both here in person and here virtually tonight. The first recognition we have is, uh, for a student named, uh, named Danica Toohey. Danica, uh, not only qualified this year as an all-state musician on the horn. Hi, Danica. But, uh, Danica also qualified as a national winner for the National Association for Music Education All-National Honors Band. Were we not in a pandemic, Danica would have had the honor and opportunity to play with some of our nation's best high school musicians in the NAFME All-National Honors Band in Orlando, Florida this past November. However, they did put together a fantastic virtual recording this year. So, Danica, congratulations on both your all-state recognition and your National Honors Ensemble recognition. Bravo. We have for her a plaque here and a certificate from the Board of Education. Thank you. Next, I'd like to bring forward, um, some students. In addition to Danica, we also have five other all-state musicians this year from Yorkville High School. Um, and we're going to be recognizing four of them who very successfully navigated through the rigorous audition uh, of ILMEA District Nine, and then we're ready to tie enough to proceed onto the state level of the Illinois Music Education Association. So the following students were selected as all-state musicians for the 2021 Virtual Illinois Music Educators Association All-State Conference. Congratulations to senior Zach Egger on bass clarinet, junior Zachary Gustafson on viola, senior Abby Sludden on English horn, and again. and again, junior Danica Toohey on horn. Please step forward. We would also like to congratulate one student who has selected through application and video submission as one of forty future music educator students in Illinois at the state level. It's my pleasure to acknowledge junior Andrew Phat. And then finally, we have another state award-winning student from our music department this year who qualified in composition. This student submitted an original piano composition, which you heard playing over the PA system as we started the meeting tonight entitled "Saunter." This composition was entered in the category of commercial instrumental solo and won first place. Congratulations to sophomore percussionist and composer Matthew Wheeler. Thank you. That concludes our Yorkville High School Student Music Awards for tonight.
Tonight, we'd like to recognize an outstanding student, Mr. Ethan Clayton. If you could come forward. Ethan is a Yorkville High School senior. Recently, he was named a National Merit finalist for being among the top one percent of our students who entered the nationwide competition. To give you some perspective, more than 1.5 million students in 21,000 high schools entered this competition by taking a PSAT National Merit Qualifying Test. However, Ethan scored in the top one percent of the students to then enter the scholarship competition, which he submitted an application, which reviews his academic record, the school and community activities, his leadership abilities, employment, and honors and awards receipt. And he's then recognized as a finalist, which puts him in the top half percent of all those students who have entered that competition. And I believe, Dr. Shem, I would like to think this is our first National Merit finalist in at least ten years. We're pretty sure, maybe not even.
Thank you, Mr. Travis. The next recognition is kind of getting real hat for our Yorkville community. But for the fourth consecutive year, the National Association of Music Works and Foundation has recognized District 115 in our music department and our community as the best community for music educational work in a time when innovation, learning opportunities was paramount for the accolades and success. Certainly, as an honorary superintendent, someone who's been in the district for a while, but also as a parent of a student who has gone through the music program, it's been pretty to be the recipient of the relationships that have been provided by our staff, the family-like environment, the tremendous amount of contributions that our staff make, that our community makes, to educating the whole child. We all know the importance of music education. This Board of Education, for decades, has played a huge role in supporting all of our music and certainly all of our fine arts, more so than many districts that certainly we come across. So it's my honor and privilege to serve as superintendent of a district that values so much in music education and certainly for the staff that gives so much to our kids and our kids and our parents who give so much to our school, district, and our community. So at this time, I'm going to ask members of the music education department to come up to the front. I'm going to ask you to introduce yourselves, your role in the district, and how long you have been here. So please come up to the front.
I do not use one of these, I promise. Once again, my name is Victor Anderson, music department chair and director here at the high school. And this is my eighteenth year in Yorkville.
Tom Schuman, this is my seventh year in the district, and I work for Yorkville Little Schools Band Department.
David Smith, this is my eighth year here, and I teach high school choir.
Hi, I'm Holismith Durin. This is my fourth year here in Yorkville, teaching orchestra at ACES and YMS.
Mike McHugh, music teacher at Fair Reserve, fifteen years strong.
Ryan Estel Martina, this is my eighth year in the district, and I am a general music teacher at YMS.
Hi, I'm Emily Schalak. I teach at Bristol Bay. This is my first year.
Hi, I'm Linda Dewey. I got to all beat because I was a student that went through Yorkville Music. But I've been teaching in the district for seven years. I'm at Bristol Grade School Music this year, as well as ACES Band and Bristol Bay Band.
Hi, I'm Bobby Reeson, and this is my ninth year here in Yorkville, and I teach band here at the high school.
Thank you. If I could, I'd just like to address the board for just one second. I just want to say thank you, and I want to tell you that we are the best. We are a best community for music education because of our students' success. Because in Yorkville, all students have access to music and the arts. In Yorkville, we support our special education population in music and the arts, many times with a one-to-one paraprofessional that even has experience reading music. In Yorkville, we support students with a certified music therapist. In Yorkville, the demographics of the school are also the demographics of our music program. We are the best community for music education because of our community of learners. In music, we have autonomy to make good decisions for our students and their individualized learning. Our music teachers have a voice and most recently have met the challenges of this school year with innovative ways to persist and thrive and showcase our student talents and abilities. And in Yorkville, we offer numerous extracurricular opportunities. We are a best community for music education because of our partnerships with the home and the community. In Yorkville, we have two community ensembles, the Summer Community Band in Yorkville Big Band. We have a variety of summer music course offerings. We have access to private lessons. And in Yorkville, we have well-supported and attended concerts and events by parents, teachers, administrators, and board members. And we are a best community for music education because of our operational excellence. While Yorkville may be lacking in music facilities, we do not let that stop us from giving students top-notch experiences. Through operational excellence, we collaborate with the maintenance department throughout the year and every December to turn the YMS auditorium into a winter wonderland. In Yorkville, we fund and staff our arts and music appropriately. In Yorkville, we exhibit fiscal responsibility through sharing equipment and having a district-wide inventory of staging, risers, music stands, and instruments. In Yorkville, we support the idea that our individual music specialists are teaching in their areas of expertise, not just certified in music, but orchestra teachers teaching orchestra, band teaching band, and choir teaching choir. And finally, through operational excellence, we try to find creative ways to maximize student contact minutes in music through pull-out lessons and manipulating every spare minute of instruction that we can find in access, advisory, lunch recess, and office hours. We are proud of our students, educators, administration, Board of Education, and the community for this outstanding recognition. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Lesson learned, never give a guy advice without reading his speech ahead of time. Victor just spent about 26 million for us. So our final, but not least, recognition tonight, I'm going to have Alicia from our foundation come up, as well as Christopher Gillen from the Nar Homes come up. And as the board knows, the board has certainly been an advocate of strong community partnerships since you have been members of the board. And I can think of no better one than we have established with Nar Homes. A couple of years ago, I guess it's been now, we talked to Nar about the work that's going on, the building that's going up over by the middle school. It came to a partnership in which, for every home sold, they graciously donated $200 back to our foundation, which serves our kids and our staff and learning opportunities. So when you think about 130 homes so far, plus $40,000 has been coming back to our kids and our staff. Like, what, 300 something are going to be built out long-term? But they've been a wonderful partner, they've been gracious in their donations and certainly a great supporter of Yorkville education. So Chris, we can't thank you and your team enough, and Alicia for being the broker between them as well. Great partnership, and we're very appreciative. Thank you.
We have another all-state student who just made it, just walked in the room. So please come forward and be recognized, Zach Egert. Thank you very much.
We're going to go right into our business meeting. So if you want to do, we do have cake. We want to take maybe a couple-minute break, have cake. Unless you want to stay for the business meeting. Which you're more than welcome to. You're free to leave. And please grab a piece of cake on your way out. Which you're more than welcome to, you're free to leave. Please grab a piece of cake on your way out. Okay, we're gonna continue our business meeting. Next on the agenda item is the committee reports, but we have a committee that holds, we're gonna go right to the consent agenda, and we will need that entire motion read, please.
Can you hear me? All right. So approve the minutes of the March 15th, 2021 Board of Education meeting. April 12th, 2021 Committee, April 12th, 2021 Executive Session meeting. The Activities Fund Report for March 2021. Final Bills and Claims for March 2021. Bills and Claims for April 2021. Boy Request Received March 23rd, 2021. Responded to on March 5th, 2021. First Mark Procure requesting purchase orders of vendors list from November 18th, 2022 current. Boy Request Received April 8th, 2021. Responded to on April 9th, 2021. From Bernadelle Soto and Chicago Region Council Carpenters requesting invoices to support the work that was performed by ED Paddock for this full year 2019 at Yorkville District 115. Boy Request Received April 6th, 2021. Responded to on April 21st, 2021. For Public Contractors requesting all current employee, staff, contact information and destroy the May 2019 Executive Session recording.
Move in second additional comments? Roll call please. Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Seppner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Yes. And then on to the treasurer's report.
Okay, just as we have an entire month, we continue to run favorably as of the end of March. We would expect to be about 75% of the way through the year. We're at 70% on revenue, but as a reminder, obviously, that number comes up once we get our May and June taxes, and we're at 69% from an expense perspective. The biggest favorability is transportation, which we've been seeing on here, particularly in special education area. Some of those buildings don't have enough to transport our students there. From a transition fee perspective, we had a very, very big month, including the Village of Montgomery. So we had $253,000 in transition fees this month, $30,000 for outside of Montgomery. And the Montgomery one pays us periodically. So 230 of that was from the Village of Montgomery. And we had $30,000 from the Grand Resort properties. The one thing I wanted to mention for Dr. Brenner is, as of March and what you saw in the packet, we have $1.3 million outstanding from the state, and we actually got that payment in the month of March. So we're only owed about $40,000 for some drivers' payments, so we did receive four payments this year. We get budget of three because we want to be conservative and not knowing what to expect from the state, but we have seen that fourth payment, so.
Pleasantly surprised.
I knew you would be, so.
I just figured you're personally your own living.
They very well, they very well make it. But so those are really the highlights. I don't know if there's, you know, any questions, not a significant number of changes from prior remarks.
Motion to approve the president's present.
Second.
Move in second additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes? And then on to a series of personnel recommendations. And the first is the Yorkville Community School District Ambassador, excuse, District Ambassador.
So this is brought to the committee. When we get to the discussion part of Steph McHugh, the author of this position is in our audience still. So get on the table with your questions.
The motion approved the Yorkville State USC 115 District Ambassador position as presented.
Second.
Move in second additional discussion, comments?
You know, I did just want to thank Ms. McHugh for bringing this proposal forward and taking the initiative and leadership to ensure that our collections that are within our schools have a very diverse and robust offerings for our kids, so.
Well, and we did discuss this at committee, but even during these most challenging times, there's sometimes great relief, I mean literacy and reading and what that provides any learner at any level. It's just a gift, it's an absolute gift that we can give to other students. So anywhere we can put that at for a high school. You know, and to have, to have, this is exactly what we've been asking for. Innovative thought leadership to come to us with ideas as we continue to move forward. So I actually want to thank, thank you Steph and your staff for doing this, because this is what we envision, you coming to us with ideas to be continued.
So what a great reminder that innovation does not always mean being plugged in. It's not about technology. If there's never been a truer time where Steph and her team and those who gave thought to this brought to our attention, it's now. So kudos, and I totally support this recommendation as well. As we said, the committee, we'd love to evaluate throughout next year and come back this time next year and give the board an update and say we're gonna take it next, because I believe it's just the beginning.
Well, we need a roll call. Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Mr. Seppner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Yes. Have a Spanish translator and family outreach specialist that we also talked about at committee, so we need a motion, call please.
Motion to approve the Spanish translator and family outreach specialist.
Move in second additional discussions. Roll call please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Seppner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke?
Yes.
Then we have a couple special needs, two recommendations.
The first one is vision itinerary, teacher position.
Motion to approve vision itinerary, teacher position as presented.
Second.
Move in second additional discussion, we also talked about this at committee. Roll call please. Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Seppner?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Yes. And then we have the second position.
The hearing itinerary, we discussed as well, it was increased from 0.8 to 1.015.
There's no question. There's no possibility.
It would be 0.2%, but it was, excuse me, 0.2 FTE. But it's in, it's necessary for the increased number of students that we have with the hearing adherence of this year.
Okay, so the motion.
Motion to approve the FTE 0.2 increase for hearing itinerary as presented.
Second.
Move in second additional discussion.
Yeah, just so I'm clear. So Pasek picks up 0.3 FTE either way without.
Actually, Melinda could probably address that better, but I think it's a, it's a minor increase to the district.
Right, that's what I was getting.
It's not a full 0.2 increase to the district. Since basic is picking apart, but it is a small increase, I'm just not sure exactly what that is.
Okay.
Additional discussion? Roll call please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Mr. Seppner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke, yes. And then we have a Yorkville Middle School Student Services Assistant.
We also talked about this at the last meeting, increasing the number of days from 215 to 260 day. The individual will be covering extended school year, which they normally have with an additional stipend, plus they'll be providing additional supports to families in the district.
Motion to approve the increase of the Yorkville Middle School Assistant Special for Student Services from a 10-month position to a 12-month position as presented.
Second.
Move in second additional discussion? Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Mr. Seppner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke, yes. And then we have an employee onboarding system.
And as we discussed at the last meeting, this will just kind of, this will start to bring us forward to moving all of our personnel files into electronic format. Initially, it will start with all of our new staff as we're hiring them on. And at some point in time, Tyler Tech will expand its ability and will be able to start scanning our own personnel files into the system. So hopefully, in a, two years down the road, we'll have everything electronic.
Motion to approve the Internet Visions deploying onboarding system as presented.
Second.
Move in second additional discussion? And then we also talked about the second, roll call please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Seppner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Yes. And we have some corporate reservations.
Motion to approve the corporate resignation as presented.
Second.
Move in second additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes? And we have some reservations, so need a motion?
Motion to approve the reservation test presented.
Second.
Move in second additional comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes? And then we have the superintendent contract extension.
Motion to approve the superintendent of contract extension July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Move in. Second, any additional discussion? Let's go to a roll call, a roll call please. Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Seppner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke?
Yes. I want to thank the board, we've been working on this for quite a while. Dr. Schim, welcome to another five years. I don't think anybody in this room would debate the fact that we would want any other leader than to guide us through what we believe is some of our best years ahead of us, not only navigating through a challenging situation, the most challenging situation, which we were able to navigate because of the structures that we had in place years ago. But what does that mean for Yorkville and the opportunities moving forward? So I'd like to collectively, to collectively welcome Dr. Schim for another five years. And thank you for your steadfast leadership. There isn't anybody in this room that works harder or supports Yorkville kids more than Dr. Schim, so, thank you.
And then we have some transfers.
And we have one transfer, and I'm really pretty excited about this. Rose has been our benefits coordinator for the last couple of years, has done an excellent job, and she's going to take over for Debbie Poole, which is the main person in the office taking care of all of our, our staff, staff needs and files, so. She'll do an excellent job.
Motion to approve the transfer. Second.
Move in second additional comments? Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Seppner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Yes. And then we have some teaching over.
As many of you may be aware, this year has been a really difficult time for getting substitute teachers. And we've only been running anywhere between 15, 60% coverage, even on a good day. And to get a teacher in to cover classrooms for remote teachers, which is the first case that's listed on here. Or for just a short period leading up to the year has been almost impossible. So in order to take care of that, we've had to reach out to teachers. In the first case, for Katie Price and Annette Spino, they're both remote teachers, so we're actually adding quite a bit of load to their current staff load or student load. And then the second portion for YMS, all of those teachers have stepped in and given up a planned period or in one case two planned periods in order to be able to continue the education of the students that are in this.
Motion to approve the teaching overload test presented.
Second.
Move in second additional comments?
I just appreciate the reference, because money's one thing, but the amount of time that we have, I mean, this is significant.
And Troy, I commend you to be able to find a solution where these are familiar staff members to students as well, so it's positive directionally.
Well, I wish I could claim credit, but our principals have done all the work, so we really appreciate that.
All right, the motion, and second, roll call please. Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Mr. Seppner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke?
Yes.
And then we have some summer school hires as presented.
These are the first of many more to come in the next meeting or so.
Motion to approve the administrative summer school hires as presented.
Second.
Move in second additional discussion? Roll call please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Mr. Seppner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke?
Yes.
Then we have some additional powers.
And we have, I know we have two, two of the candidates here for the administrative, but I'm not sure of the third one. Third one, I'm not sure, okay. So we have Craig Wesley, who'll be our Director of Business Services, and Dr. Kelly Redd. Here with us tonight.
Give your wave, everybody, so. Welcome. Craig's over here in the blue.
Send a motion, please.
Motion to approve the hire as presented.
Second.
Move in second, any additional discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Seppner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Burke?
Yes.
Welcome. All right, time to hold business, so we have dual-language grade eight course offering.
I guess this item has been brought to the board a few different times and we've made some adjustments to the offerings after receiving quite a bit of feedback from our staff and our community. There was also, at the last board meeting, a request to investigate whether or not we can offer high school credit for these dual-credit, for these dual-language courses at the middle school. So today, we've contacted the Regional Office of Education and the Illinois State Board of Education two separate times to try to receive some clarity as to whether or not that we can approve high school credit for a middle school course when a middle school course is not planned at the high school. And we do believe that the state will provide us with some flexibility, that we need to continue that investigation to ensure that's number one, the route that we want to go. And number two, what type of hiring stipulations we would need to also make sure that we're in compliance with as well. And so our current information states that if we were to go down that path, we would need an individual who is certified as bilingual certification, a middle school endorsement, a middle school contemporary endorsement, and also high school contemporary endorsement as well. So very unique and rare certification. We're seeking a motion to approve our course offering plans.
Motion to approve the Yorkville Middle School grade eight dual-language courses offered as presented. Second.
Moved into the second additional discussion.
Just to say, I appreciate you looking into this, I know it's a complex situation. And, and this, the certificate is required for a lot of the things that we'll discuss. This are going to be hard to find, but at least I appreciate the fact that we're making that up absolutely.
All those in favor then? Motion in the second, all those in favor of the middle school course offerings?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. And then we have some social studies resources.
This was brought to the board back in March and also placed on display for thirty days. We're seeking a motion, motion to approve the social studies resources as presented.
Motion through the Yorkville High School Social Studies Resources as presented. Second.
Moved into the second, any additional discussion? And then we also talked about.
Discussing.
Any need of roll call? Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke?
Yes. I'm excited too, to think this will provide some really engaging learning experiences. Some of these resources very nicely connect with our existing MS and to be sure that the students are going to enjoy it. All right, then we have the twenty twenty-one scheduling transition team update.
I'm going to share my screen for those that are viewing at home and also for the board. We have a brief presentation. The scheduling transition team is one of five transition teams that are conducting the planning for, for next school year. And so this particular team is made up of point five to thirty individuals that span teaching ranks and also the administrators as well, from a kindergarten level all the way to the high school level. And so the committee is organized into three subgroups, one high school, one middle school, and then one elementary school. And I'll go through the plans and proposals for each of the groups here this evening. But I wanted the board to be aware that prior to beginning this work in February, we met and established as a leadership group some guiding principles to ensure we had alignment to the strategic plan and also with our values here as a, as a district. So you can see common themes that we discussed, things like flexibility, choice, ensuring the social emotional wellbeing of our students, and having a positive culture and climate and learning experience. And so our high school committee or our high school group is led by Mr. David Travis, who is here. And I wanted to give the board and the community just a little bit of a historical perspective. And so what you see on your screen there, this was the pre-pandemic twenty nineteen schedule, where we had eight blocks of time, forty-seven minutes long, with an optional block zero that happened at the beginning of the day at six-thirty. And so this was pre-pandemic, the schedule that students followed, and they participated in seven academic classes of forty-seven minutes of length each day. In the pandemic world, we've offered, we went to a block schedule for timed course period that are longer lengths of time, where students would go through those seven academic periods over the course of two days, then participate asynchronously or independently in their course for a two-day period, and then back to go through that block schedule for another two-day period. And so after extensive conversation and discussion over the course of the last few months, the committee is proposing a flex mod schedule, which is basically a combination of that block scheduled period and also a, a day in the week where the students would participate in all seven of their academic classes. And so in this example, you can see at the top of the screen in red, that block zero, that five-day-a-week course still exists and is still optional for students to take. But in this model, over the course of the two days, which were dealing in A-day and a B-day period, students would participate in all of their academic courses, all seven of them, in a ninety-minute block period. On a C-day, they would then participate in all seven of their academic courses in the same day. And so in this example, you can see on Monday and Tuesday, students would participate in their seven academic courses over the course of that two-day period of ninety-minute blocks. And then on Wednesday, they would participate in all seven of their academic courses for a forty-eight-minute time period. We were also able to connect with that social emotional development, wellbeing of students, were able to offer an advisory flex time period, two days a week, within this proposal. And that is time where students will participate in social emotional learning lessons and really have the opportunity to reconnect with the school, reconnect with their, their peers, and reconnect with staff members and adults. Thus offering students two days a week that flexibility to be able to have some control over their, over their schedule and work on their time management skills. From a student's perspective, I just wanted to give you another, another look at this. This is an example of a current student's schedule. In this particular case, we have the A-day, the student would participate in that block one in their AP research, research class, which is in the top left of your screen. Then the student would have the advisory and flex time period at nine o'clock from nine to ten-thirty. During that time, we were able to pair teachers together and work out some common release time per staff, one time a week. So for example, in this model, on Monday, half of the staff would get collaboration time or common release time, four ninety minutes, while the other half of the staff on Thursday of that week, on the second A-day in the week, would get common collaboration time, which is something that the, the committee felt was, was very important and needed in order to develop those highly engaging lessons that need to take place during that ninety minutes, because we want to make sure we're taking advantage of every single structural minute that we have. And then to continue out the schedule with this particular student, they would go to lunch at ten-thirty-five, have an office hour, participate in their junior PE leaders class, which is another ninety-minute block, and then round out the day with their honors pre-calc. They would then go through their second half of their schedule on the B-day with the PLTW course, Spanish four, again, then lunch and office hours, their AP physics class, and then AP language class at the last block of the day to round it out, they hit two-thirty-five. Now, I just want to be clear that we are recommending that students come to campus every single day to participate in this and, and their schedule, so that no longer we have the asynchronous days where students will be at home. I'll talk about e-learning at the end of the presentation after we go through all, all three of the levels. But then on a C-day, the student would participate in every one of those courses in that, over that day, period of that day, and then repeat it for the Thursday and the Friday in this particular, in this particular study. Currently, Mr. Travis, at this point in time, has solicited more staff interest to help ensure that we are prepared to offer this type of experience for our students. So he's designed five internal committees that will take place at the high school and solicited staff to lead those committees, and then also to ensure that we have some continuity, consistency about the expectations. One of those committees is the Flex Block Committee, who, who is responsible for developing ways for students to reconnect and then facilitate that mediation process. We continually monitor that BS list at the high school to ensure that we have enough processes in place to ensure students are being successful in their classes. Then an advisory committee that talks about the social emotional learning part, a learning management system committee, that is a continuation, I think of the word, that the engagement committee has started on this year to establish those common expectations for student engagement and develop standards of practice. Also a PD committee that will be discussing the unit and lesson plan design, because we certainly, in a ninety, ninety-minute block period, do not want ninety minutes to sit and get instruction. We want engagement, we want multiple students' ways to engage with that curriculum in multiple avenues. And so that would be the responsibility of this committee to develop that PD. And also from a standpoint of engagement and expectations, from also from an e-learning standpoint, but also from an in-person standpoint. Mr. Travis is here tonight, Mr. Travis, is there anything that you would like to add with regards to the progress of, of the high school part of the scheduling committee?
Thank you, Dr. Robyn, I think you did an excellent job of explaining the schedule. I'd like to compliment the high school team, and they really worked very hard to optimize instructor. Both instructional time, and we've actually been able to increase the amount of instructional time that our students would proceed in a week. The big piece our staff wanted to do is have a three, three touchpoints each week with our students. So right now, for a four-block, you get the one week you have three days, the other week you have two. The other piece for us was to build in the social emotional learning as well as the Flex Block. The Flex Block is really that idea of reconnecting our students to, to our school and to our, our community. And, and some things were really kicking around in that Flex Block for students. So clubs and activities are needed on a monthly rotating basis, and we want every kid to be reconnected back to school and back to our, our programs. We have enrichment and interests such as rehearsals, masterclass, passion pursuits, open labs, teacher availability for students who need help from their teachers, but also community culture building. Now we have the opportunity to build in assemblies and natural community building opportunities without withdrawing from our instructional time with our students. The advisory period is a piece that we want to work very much on, social emotional learning. But if you look at our advisor, each student will have two advisors. They'll have an academic advisor and a social emotional advisor. So if, if Ryan and I are sharing an advisory, and Ryan's in collaboration on meeting with our advisor students, and when he's in collaboration, I will be working with our advisories. And one will play a role as an academic advisor, like you normally see in a college situation where you have an advisor each and every day, supporting them academically, but also we'll have one who will work on their social emotional health as well. So we're excited about both of these opportunities as well as the collaboration. And though we're going to have a lot of learning loss and things to continue to remedy over the next few, few years, this gives us that collaborative time each and every week that we can work with our teams to focus on student learning growth.
Thank you, Mr. Travis. Will we stick around and help answer questions at the end?
I guess my recommendation would be to have a discussion about the high school now versus waiting to the end and come back to it. If you're okay with that as a board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
While it's fresh and.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's fine.
I'm ready.
Any questions for Mr. Travis and myself?
Yeah, I just have one.
Sure.
And I realize you're addressing, you know, block schedules, we've had them before. And in theory, I think it makes a lot of sense. In practice, they're sometimes difficult. And as you said, you don't want ninety minutes of somebody just talking to people. Because it doesn't work. So I'm very curious to see, the, the detail is just how you break it up. So you continue to engage. It's not, you know, for any of us. Any lecture you go to, it seems like the human brain after fifty minutes shuts off. Maybe we've trained it. But it, it, it'll be a big piece of the success.
Absolutely. And, and when that committee does develop those common expectations, we'll bring that back for the board to, the board to review. And also I want to mention that that was part of the conversation that this transition team had, and also stressed that importance and agree with, with your statements.
And I guess I would go on to say that whether it's fifty minutes, or sixty, or ninety, engagement, engagement is engagement. And, and there's kids who could go for two days in a row with forty-five-minute lectures, and that's no better than going ninety in one day. You know, and when we talk to kids, when we talk to parents, that was a big feedback that they gave as well, that, you know, the kids say, break it up, don't, don't let us sit here for ninety minutes and just listen to you talk. You know, give us an opportunity to do different activities, get engaged, work with peers. And as you said, Bob, when you think about labs, when you think about some of our, our discussions, when you think about some of the work that we could do with meaningful time, there's certainly great, great advantage to that, but it has to be done. It has to be structured.
It has to be structured, absolutely. And I would tell you, I mean, you know, most of my post-grad work has been in crip and destruction. That's where most of my work's been. You don't look up any lesson model, learning design, whatever you talk about. They're not going to talk about minutes, they're going to talk about the, the structure and the engagement that you're creating for kids. And if all we do is sit kids in front of a computer or stuff in front of a board, it's no different if it's ten minutes. They're going to be disengaged and disconnect. I don't think our, our staff is welcoming the opportunities to reengage with kids and, and, you know, not have the social distancing and the parameters all that we have now. And we, you know, obviously, we're going to be transitioning for quite some time. Hopefully this year, we get back to the world as we hope it is, the normal. But, you know, if we taught it this way for ten minutes, it's, it's not going to be good structure. And I, I've gone and spent a lot of time with Potavia, I've talked to Highland Park, I've talked to some other districts that are using a similar version, the variation of their, thereof of what we're doing. And they said the same thing. It's, it's all on how lesson design and user design goes. If it's poorly designed, it's poorly designed.
Thank you. I, I think this, one of, obviously, my biggest concern is the structure of that time.
Sure.
We went away from block scheduling for a reason, several reasons actually, and now we're coming back to it, and that troubles me, to be honest. I, I want to make sure that that ninety minutes is well structured, students are entirely engaged the whole time. And to be very honest, and my son is a senior, his second course is where a teacher might teach for forty-five or fifty minutes, and then there's no engagement after that at all for the next forty-five minutes. And that troubles me as a parent, troubles me as a board member. Now, could those instructors who have done things differently with professional development help? I certainly would hope so. But I'm, I'm not sold on this, I'll be very honest, not sold at this point. So I, I, I need to see some data. I'd like to see the learning achievements based on the block scheduling compared to the scheduling we had in the past, and then learn some more information.
I, um, thank you, Bob, and Sean for the comments. I know that when we left block scheduling, the, the sciences that had the labs, they really, we got really creative of how we emulated those labs. I know as the state moves to more science, giving kids more opportunity for science and labs and project lead the way, you know, I'd be interested, you know, so allowing space for those labs to have the, the P. I'm, I'm curious to, thank you, kind of, I had, I had a question on the advisory. You know, I'm not sure kids need academic advising twice a week. So in the advising and social emotional, and then you have an office hour of, you know, how, what is that, what is it? What does that program turn into?
Sure.
And we have very directed kids too, that can't fit everything they need to fit into either. So I'm, you know, can this open the door for electives and other things? Because especially if you're at these AP tracks and things like that, you have no chance for electives or things like that. So I guess my question would be, are there even more flexible from that? Maybe you don't need the academic, you know, what if, is, can kids really utilize that time? Can they truly say what's? What does that really mean to a kid? Is that truly what's?
Yep.
Meaning opens the door for all sorts of opportunities? Not just what we. It like down.
It's an open campus concept for students, and certainly some students will require some compulsory work because they may be falling behind and need some support. But most students, if they're doing academically well and they don't need those additional supports, they would have those opportunities to, to do whatever they want to do. You know, I, I'm a belief that we give kids choices and we, you know, on the big level, we create culture and kids will put the culture we create. We create a culture that's engaging and they want to be, or they're certainly going to, they're going to want to engage in that process. I think it's, we, I, the challenge for us next year is we connect the kids back to school. That is a number one challenge for us, is getting kids connected back to school. You know, our kids are, you know, they, they, they have to connect back to what's like to be broken foxes, to like to, to connect back to each other. All those things are very, very important. So, and ultimately, I'd like to see a multi-grade global advisor or upperclassmen are kind of setting that culture and using our underclassmen and making connections. You know, we have two campuses in the one school, but sometimes a freshman will always feel like they're part of this campus. So there's a lot of great opportunities for us to rebuild culture and reconnect back with our kids and take us even further than where we are. I really do. I think it's a, it's a pretty creative model that they came up with, and I think, you know, I do think we'll see some, both academic growth and achievement as a result of it.
Culture is also achieved in context in the classroom.
True.
Academic counseling strength, social emotional happens in the classroom with the teacher, with context.
Yes, in a teachable.
You're all day long, you know, feed that every day, every week, from teaching, not someone else to go to for someone else, for someone else. Well, so when are you thinking about what, what timeline you think you'll have the high school schedule worked out?
Well, we, we could have to take it more feedback and more consideration. We hope to bring something back prior to the end of the year. The attempt would be in April, because there were some things that we need to.
May.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
The, the goal is big time. And I guess I'm going to, I guess I'll ask, Dr. Schumacher, like, we need more specific guidelines as far as what you're asking for. It's just asking for data that, that's going to be.
Well, we need all an A sector, I guess we need to narrow our focus on what exactly you or the board in or is looking for.
Right.
Um, and uh.
It's not a four block, so it's not a straight four block, which is something we used to, in the past, that was our block.
Yeah.
So we're not a four block, so this is not, uh, this is, you know, so you're not gonna see what student complete algebra in the first quarter.
And then not get, you know, geometry until second semester of their sophomore year.
Which is what we used to be.
Correct.
Right.
That's a huge problem, and I would, I wouldn't recommend a full block either. So I wouldn't, I would, I wouldn't be sitting here crying with that.
I I I, again, my biggest concern is the structure, I'd like to see what the professional development will be and how that will will incorporate into those. Uh, in the committee that you mentioned, Dr. Baughman, uh, professional development committee. Uh, and then I'd also like to see information about the engagement and the expectations. Um, you know, and I think obviously that pings into the learning achievement that's that's necessary for what we're looking for. I mean, I, you know, I'd like to see how things went over the last year with this particular schedule. Possibly compared to the way the learning was achieved throughout the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Find that information, if it's available, I don't know.
Is that, would you say that's a fair comparison this past year versus what happened in two twenty?
Probably not, so I agree with you there, but. But again, I just think back to, to me, this, to me, this seems kind of as a regression, we were at this. Used this block scheduling previously, we went away with more commitment. For several reasons, and. I I'd just like to see some, some reasons truly why we wanna go back to this all the time. Well, you you know, it, that's right, yeah, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, I really do, because that was. Here, when we did that, but. There were a lot of good things about block scheduling for certain types of classes. The 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 weaknesses where, as you mentioned before, you know, you could have a math class and then I'd see another one for a year, you know, so that that was a problem. Which does not happen in this setting. So i- it, you know, structured correctly with an engaging teacher, with the right activities. Yeah, you need that. You know, but but there are certainly classes that's much more difficult to do, you know, unless you're gonna do cross-learning and you're gonna do cross-informational. Teaching between different available, different, different learning styles, as well as, you know, the subject matters. Which is what we're moving towards, I mean, the whole idea here is that we, we stop compartmentalizing that respect, so it should. Cause, you know, the idea here is is flexibility. I agree, it's it's a weakness. And I do agree with that. But we're not gonna get anywhere if we keep doing the same little whatever. You know, so if we look back at our old schedule, and you know, you hit the fifteen minute thing. You know, so if you if you're a biology class, you're in the middle of experiment, you know, okay, time to go, you're only got a spot. So i- it, it's, the structure's gonna be very important to see, and I'm sure, you know, the board will be well aware of that. Um, and and I think it'll be nice to be able to see some of the ideas, at least examples, you know, of where you're going with this. And we're gonna have to maybe some rope to see how it works, I mean, I I understand that. But the the flexibility in allowing students to to move across discipline. Um, to to be able to integrate information, not just regurgitate. You know, it, it, we we've moved in that direction, we've made some progress in that direction, we. And in a schedule like this, at least you're kind of holding it up. If we leave it the same way it was, I'm a little afraid that we'll never really change.
Man, I I do, we know that the the schedule that we proposed is different than what we had at the block a decade ago. I do also believe that we have, we, we're in a different place in our district, we're in a different place with. Whether it's technology, whether it's instructional practices, than we were a decade ago. Um, and I I, I do think this provides, when you look at all the different flexibility, both for staff and students. Then if you were to go back three screens and look at twenty nineteen, twenty, even when you look at that screen.
Yes.
Eight blocks, it's forty-two minutes or forty-seven minutes, whatever it is, there's no flexibility for kids or for staff. And I I think when we talk, we have post-secondary educators here, you know her than I would. In preparation for post-secondary experiences, I don't know if an eight-block traditional forty-seven minutes is more similar to what is provided in post-secondary? Or a ninety-minute block, what we're talking about, I would assume it's ninety-minute block, there's gonna be more of that at post-secondary. So the preparation, but it goes down to what we're doing with kids, trying to use that. The word is saying.
There's a difference.
And if kids are sitting there just doing packets for one or other sort of module.
Agreed, and the other, the other thing, and I know Dr. Baughman, you haven't gotten to this point yet, but I'll also, I think it. It's incredibly important to uh, for us to learn exactly what the e-learning will look like with this particular schedule as well. Definitely, that's gonna make, how how that's gonna impact the the scheduling as well, absolutely.
Appreciate your questions and thoughts very much.
Yeah, I do, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
So simultaneously, the middle school, uh, who is led by um, Mr. Tom Schuman, is here tonight, hi, Tom. Um, and our administrators, Mrs. Kerr and Mrs. Adler are here uh, tonight as well. The easiest way to think about uh, the middle school is in terms of instructional minutes, and so. Um, this slide and chart provides you with a three-year look at the instructional minutes. From twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, pre-pandemic, to this current year, to the twenty-one, uh, twenty-two school year and the proposal. And really, um, from a, uh, from an academic standpoint. The major change uh, is to address the learning deficiencies that were noticed in our middle school, the area of mathematics, and so the team is recommending. Increasing the math minutes from the pre-pandemic forty-two minutes to sixty-three minutes. Uh, and also having a common and consistent advisory block that will happen at the beginning of each and every day. Uh, that helps us um, get students connected to school again, and also gives us an opportunity to address that social emotional learning component. Uh, that we had talked about uh, in the high school, and uh, in this proposal, um, math and E L A. Is basically a a period and a half, so sixty-three minutes for both of those content areas. And then science, social studies, and the elective courses uh, would be uh, forty-two minutes, and to give you a little look, uh, just from a scheduling standpoint. Uh, of what that might look like, this schedule reflects the advisory period at the beginning of the day. Some forty-two minute periods, and then also the staggered lunch that's in the middle, uh, middle of the day, uh, in period six, seven, and eight. From a student perspective, this is a sample schedule, um, this shows you that the, we have some advisory time in the morning. Social studies for forty-two minutes, P E, science and art for forty-two minutes, a lunch block. Um, a Spanish course, and then also that double block of math and E L A, at each of each of sixty, sixty-three minutes, um, in length. And um, from that, I'll ask either Mrs. Adler, Mrs. Kerr, or Mr. Schuman, uh, to kind of share next steps with the board. Uh, and if this was approved, uh, what we need to do to move forward, and I think I see Mrs. Adler coming forward.
Next steps for us at the middle school is to really define our advisory time. Uh, prior to this year, advisory was at the beginning of the day, and returning back to that. Uh, but we're looking to partner a core teacher with one of the P E elected teachers, so that there's two teachers in the room. Which would allow the students then to connect with whichever teacher they connect with in their advisory class. Through advisory is where our social emotional comes through with second step. It's where we'll have our dream box, it's where we'll have our independent reading time as well, so. The committee has brought that back to the building level for us to define. The other piece that is true, we would work on next is math. Sixty minutes does not improve math, mathematical scores, mathematical achievement. It's the instructional pedagogy at that time, so that's the piece that we would work on next, uh, if approved. This is Kerr, this is Schuman. Good?
Thank you, Mr. Travis, are there any questions for um, either of the the committee chairs or myself or the middle school?
I mean, the only, you know, sciences. Yeah, I'm I'm just wondering, we're gonna, I don't, you can't create minutes.
I know.
But I see that.
Well, we have a little bit of the answer to that. Um, one of the things that we're really trying to work on is to group the core periods together. So that they can define how that team uses that time. This year, because it was all blocked together, our Sunday science team decided to do their half-hand, whole-hand experiment. All at once, so the kids could have a whole science experiment, and that was due to the team. Defining how they use their time, now it can't exactly be like it was this year. But the team is, we're trying to figure out how we can do that, to give the core their time to decide how they're gonna use it.
Another thing I wanted to point out for the board is, I think, maybe that, um, this past year for for health and and safety protocol practices. We group students and cohorts, um, this committee is recommending that we go away from that. Uh, to give kids a chance to connect with um, more students at the middle school, uh, still following um, the proper health and safety protocol. Um, but we we recommend going away from that uh, that cohort model, uh, that was put into place for social distancing purposes.
Yeah, and when we discussed this with our students, they were, they were that as well, they wanted to see other times in the building.
No, I appreciate the math block, and and even pre-polling. It was a weakness, so, uh, I think, you know, really making sure those math skills are ready to be before they get to middle school. I'd be interested to see how this.
And uh, Mrs. Kerr and I met with every E L A teacher, the math teacher, and especially with math. Every single math teacher came in with new ideas on how they wanted to teach math differently. We didn't elicit that response, they came with that, all these great ideas that. They wanted to start applying, you know, especially with the Mia Myers P D of the three F math. So they are in the right place for the teams and their instructional practices.
And I agree, you know, with Dr. Burks and Mrs. Adler, that we need to make sure that our instructional practices are engaging during that time. And that every minute is um, used to its fullest extent.
Correct.
What I, you'll hear me say this to the elementary, I'll say it now with the both of them, but what I've asked Dr. Baughman is. As we head into next year with the schedule for the K level, um, I'm gonna ask that the scheduling committees continue to meet. And and get outside of our our area, and take a look at some K eight different schedules. Um, as we, you know, here, in the elementary level, when we talk about foreign language, we talk about integration of music robotics and STEM. Um, in sending the middle school, as we start doing our work with career pathways, seven, twelve. What does that mean, how are we getting more females into engineering and science and math minutes? And that has to start at the middle school level, we can't, we can't wait till they enter, you know, ninth grade. So our, we, there might be some limitations. Of where we wanna go, what our schedule currently will be, knowing that, you know, this is what we have in the fall, it's not the end all be all. Uh, we're gonna have to continue to progress with, you have a duty for providing kids or wanting to provide kids. And that's gonna happen at the K six as well as in the school. So if this is more of a beginning of the transition.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Adler. Uh, from an elementary perspective, Mrs. Emily Lach is here tonight, um, she's our principal at Little Grade School, who is the chair of this committee. Um, the one, one way to think about uh, the elementary scheduling standpoint is in terms of updating plans, and so what what I have here is provided. Uh, sample minutes from a three-year perspective for grades first, second, um, and third, and fourth, and so. Um, as you can see, a lot of consistencies here, um, we wanted to maintain, the group was very adamant about maintaining. That additional time uh, for recess and play uh, within the primary age students day. Um, but also to have social emotional learning that is embedded, like back to first to your point, that is embedded into uh, the classroom experience for teachers. And so that would come through a morning meeting that would happen every day, uh, along with explicit uh, instruction around social emotional learning. Um, and and development for their for their students, and and so in this schedule, you could see the four core, not a lot of changes. In grades one, two, and three in the areas of uh, E L A, social studies, and science, the one thing I will note that when it says. Alternating instructional units for social studies and science, that means the students in grades one, two, and three. Don't have social studies and science every single day, they either have social studies or science. Uh, in some of our buildings, that looks, looked like um, a block weeks of time, and other buildings that would look like alternating days. Uh, and so the committee is now tasked to ensure that we have consistency across all seven of our, uh, of our of our buildings, or all six of our buildings. Um, from a, uh, from a science and social studies, um, unit of instruction standpoint. Uh, in grades uh, four and five, you can see here, we also have that increased minutes of recess. Social emotional learning that I previously mentioned in primary grades, also extends uh, to fourth and fifth grade, and also sixth grade at the bottom of your screen. Um, fourth and fifth grade at the top of the screen have that alternating instructional units, and so. Um, we will also, as part of the the extended work that Dr. Schiff had mentioned, um, be creating interdisciplinary units. Um, using um, E L A and social studies together to make sure that we have that cross-curricular connection and interdisciplinary units. Uh, but we're also adding, recommending to add additional minutes in math, uh, at the elementary level as well in grades uh, four. Uh, and five, we see, uh, we start to see a decline on our standard S S scores, um, in the area of math, starting in the fourth grade, and so to address that. Uh, one step that we'd like to take is to add more minutes uh, in in that math class. Um, from a sixth grade uh, perspective, that one slight difference uh, in the schedule. Here is that students in sixth grade do have social studies and science every single day, along with E L A and math as their, uh, as their core instructional units. And so those are intended uh, to be blocked for the purposes. Um, of of partner teaching, and so, um, for example, one teacher might teach. E L A and social studies and a second teacher, um, and then they would switch uh, and teach um, science and math, so. Effectively, you could have a partner teacher situation, um, where they would teach, um, one content or two content areas twice. Um, from a kindergarten level perspective, um, you can see a slight increase in the minutes of math. Um, social emotional and recess is also uh, very much a recommendation of this core with a lot of. Um, a lot of similar time spent in content areas from the pre-pandemic twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. We are still very interested in now offering that full day kindergarten experience, uh, we just aren't there yet at this this point in time for variety reasons. This is a sample schedule, I have uh, two sample schedules that I'll show you, one is a a potential uh, first grade schedule, the reason I'm gonna share this. Um, is just to highlight that the uh, schedule itself, um, while it may say a long block period of time. For example, a hundred and thirty minutes in English, language, arts, that could happen at multiple times during the day, so in this first grade example. Um, we have from nine thirty to eleven, ten, E L A, and then suits that E L A again in the afternoon, so it's not that one block. Continuous amount of time for multiple hours. And then this is just to look at what a fourth and fifth grade sample student schedule could potentially be, plus again highlighting. Um, that it could be broken up, the pattern areas could be broken up throughout the day. And Mrs. Lach, uh, is there anything that you would like to uh, to add or share with the board with regards to um, next steps for this particular committee?
Um, so, just to kind of build upon what you were sharing, I think our big um. Key point is how we really wanna make sure we're developing the whole child, so, as Dr. Baughman said. Um, we want to make sure we're not compromising in any one area, so really starting with that morning meeting. Focusing on social emotional learning, um, like you talked about, Dr. Burks, really, that's happening all day. Really setting the tone for our day with a consistent district-wide classroom morning meeting. And um, really having time to also explicitly teach the social emotional skill sets within the context of a morning meeting. And then from there, also the importance of play, and we have, I've seen this. Every day outside on a playground, and the kids need to play, they need to interact, especially coming back from this year, so that was a key piece. Though, when that being said, um, we also wanna make sure that we are going to go deeper next year in terms of our academics, so. Um, as Dr. Schuman touched on, we are going to be looking ahead at schedules and Stan and some of those other pieces. But for next year, within the context of what we're already doing. How do we take our pre-existing science and social studies framework and do it better? So some of the things we're gonna be doing, um, for next steps are looking at better resources. So it's great to stop Mrs. McHugh here tonight, really using her and other people, um, that we have to have better mentor tests. Whether it's for social emotional learning or it's for social studies, um, to increase our hands-on activities, so right now, there are. So right now, they're putting together science bins with lessons tied to our current framework. So that we're doing science more consistently and we're doing it better and it's more hands-on. So really, that resource piece is a big one. And then looking at the pieces where you see us adding minutes and even where our minutes are staying the same. For example, in math, we're really been talking a lot about, it's not just about adding the minutes, that's what we're doing with them. And so one of the pieces of feedback was more professional learning tied to, again, things that we already have, which is, for example, like our math framework. How do we do that better? What does that look like in a classroom? And then pieces like Dreambox, which we added on to learning platforms this year, RAS, Kids for Reading and Entry Classroom. Now, how do we now go into year two utilizing those platforms and that and use the data better? Because they're adaptive programs and Lexia, how do we use that data better to inform our instruction, for example, in math? So and it'll be year two next year with C-Son, Google Classroom. So how do we use those platforms in a way that's purposeful? So those are really some of our next steps. One piece I wanted to point out also is we are going to be, you know, similar to the middle school and high school with bigger chunks of time for collaboration. So we're proposing monthly collaboration in which teachers will have a half-day. And during that time, that will also give kids different opportunities to explore and engage in different things that they typically might not get to do. But also have the opportunity for teachers to go deeper with the data, to go deeper with learning discussions. That often we can't do in our current morning model. It works well for a lot of things, but sometimes those pieces we can't do in forty-five minutes. So that's something that the teachers felt would be really beneficial, so that we're doing kind of what I've heard in the high school conversation. Doing it well, like talking about what we're doing with engagement and really helping the children grow that image, that choice and voice within the classroom.
Any questions for Mrs. Lach or myself of the elementary proposal?
No, but I and I assume we're still using the flex time within these. Yeah, so math and flex where you're at at that math level, we're still needing students further out.
Yeah, differentiated or extended.
So it doesn't show with the schedule, but it would be happening.
Right, or or within the classroom, so.
Yeah, so the larger initiative listed is RTI. And so I know, like, for example, like, you're in grade, we did a little time where they're able, we weren't able to do as much this year, but they're able to flex where they need the students further out. And we talked a lot about moving more towards doing more of that in the future.
Yeah, so Bob, going back to all those models we saw that centered.
Right, yeah, I mean, it it, you know, we spend so much time in those early grades on reading and understanding language. Absolutely critical. But sometimes I wonder if we don't fall down in math because we don't look at math the same way. We're we're in a present environment, math is just another language. You know, we don't treat it that way. So we do a lot of cross-disciplinary work. We're always reading the reading component, we're reading vocabulary, and and we do a better job of that. But it it math, it it somehow gets separated out as a as a basic component of everything. And so it can be compartmentalized. And but it sounds like, you know, the idea here is let's take it along with it. I mean, think about when kids get older, the chemistry of it. So it doesn't, it's just as important that a child can flow basically mathematics as it is that they can do.
We could have a lot of discussion around that in terms of down the road, we want to thoughtfully look at what our next steps are. But even with STEM or cancel incorporating that math, doing incorporating math into our current science, how do we incorporate those things better? They want to make sure we're thoughtful about those next steps. But we definitely had a lot of discussion about, are we preparing our kids for the future and for careers that are that don't even exist yet? We don't, we don't even know about yet. Are we setting them up for that? So, you know, it doesn't happen tomorrow, but what is our what is our plan to kind of start to really think about that? And hopefully, we might need to change some light factors instead, starting with the schedule and taking one piece at a time.
Yeah, our schedule is just a priority. And and as you mentioned, you know, one day, I know, I know what happens, a starter might spend two-thirds of the day on a particular area that it looks like the kids are engaged in. It's going to benefit you. So, but it isn't like every day, this is what's going to happen. So this is the work that we're doing here.
Yeah, and you know, even in all these models, the high school model, middle school model, the elementary school model. Everything from how's or these schedules are so linear and learning is not linear. Every unit isn't the same, but we treat it the same. And so what I appreciated is in all of these, we talk about flexibility, testing, piloting things, seeing what holds. To try to kind of figure out where we need to go on that. So we appreciate that thought, that you have our support there as we kind of, you know, kind of go into next year and part of this league. But I appreciated the fact that all of you are flexibility there and voice and choice in there. Because it isn't linear, right? I first did, you know, like you said, Bob, I mean, everything is so linear.
It doesn't know.
And it doesn't, it that's, that's not how we can even reject our jobs every day. So getting towards a more flexible model would be the struggle.
Yes, the goal would be by the end of next year, we talk about integration of the ELA and social studies. And we spent the year with teams doing PD, but also like creating consistency and having integrated units across all grade levels. Gentlemen, here by the end of next year. So if we start twenty, you know, twenty-two, twenty-one, or twenty-three, or we're here, twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two, then all of that is in place. And we've looked at schedules that can support that mindset. And we've so we've gone through part of our scheduling work next year to do that. Or how do we incorporate coding into our elementary level? I mean, there's just so much more kids to be doing and exposed to that sometimes our schedule, as you said, is in its head.
It's just injected quantum theory.
Yes. So it's an exciting time. Committees have done a lot of work, we've spent a lot of time talking, building in for staff.
Thank you, Mrs. Lach. Two more slides, I promise. The e-learning considerations for for next year. We would plan to offer e-learning as an option for for our students if the elementary state board of education would allow it. And and our our school board would approve it. We still do not have guidance from the elementary state board of education of whether or not that is going to be an option for us. But we are going to make the assumption that it is. And so in the spirit of not waiting on the elementary state board of education. In May, we will be surveying parents and staff to see if they are interested in this e-learning option. Our initial survey indicated we have about ten percent of our families that would consider e-learning as a as an option. But it will look differently than it did in years past. So from a seven-twelve example, that we would, we propose to do away with the dual modality or simultaneous instruction. Where one student is online, attending class virtually, while the teacher is teaching kids in person. We would not want to do that, we don't believe that's best practice. There may be some unique circumstances in which that that may be unavoidable, depending on enrollment numbers. But certainly, we do not want to implement that as a standard of practice. What we would do is design a virtual or remote instruction instructional model. Where remote students would be taught by a teacher who's only teaching remotely. Okay, so similar to what we had done at the elementary level this past year. So the recommendation would be, if when at all possible, to do away with that dual modality instruction. That is driven by enrollment. And so that is part of the reason why we want to make sure that we are reaching out to families to see if they have interest. And at the high school level, not necessarily entirely e-learning, but there could be situations where students are taking one class in person and the other class virtual. Or e-learning, which would follow the same schedule that we had had along before. Part of that work is to then develop those common expectations and provide continuous support, professional development for our staff members if we are. Or if they are teaching a course, a course remotely. That goes back to the conversations that we've had in the past about engagement and making sure that we outline that what engagement looks like virtually. And and have a clear definition of what that is. And not just in a discussion thread or discussion post, that's part of the conversation. But engagement from a standpoint of assignment completions, almost like a contract that that the students would have to live up to. About what their expectations are from a from an e-learning standpoint. Another example that we would propose is from an elementary school standpoint. We would want more face-to-face or virtual face-to-face instruction with the teacher. And so this chart, what it shows you up at the top in red, the number of minutes that the students themselves would be participating in a Zoom meeting. Or a virtual, a virtual class. And and so, as you can see, the recommendation is to increase the number of. Virtual meetings that the students would have with the teachers, whether it's in core instruction with their entire class or it's small group instruction. We would have more robust expectations of our students to participate in a more synchronous e-learning environment. And less asynchronous work for those particular students. And so that would be an enrollment, driven by enrollment, as well. And so I do believe that we could potentially run a section at every, at every grade level virtually for those families that would prefer that option. And there may be some information from the state that requires school districts to offer a remote option for students that have medical conditions or concerns about coming back to campus. Some of that is still yet to be determined.
Now, that's a good, something for us to remember, that if, let's say, at the secondary level, we're not offering it an algebra one remote class. But the state is telling us, we have two kids medically who are able to be at home. We're going to have to figure something out for them to attend our class remotely. I mean, that's just, and we're we're trying to stay where you can do modality, absolutely. But we just don't know the guidelines the state's going to put on this.
Could be any exceptions.
So we know they're going to allow it, you want to be, you just don't know what other stipulations.
We we believe they're going to allow it for sure for.
I agree.
The medically, but as I as I shared with the board, we do have policy six twenty-five that we, the board approved back in twenty nineteen. That allows for remote learning. Their legal counsel believes that regardless of what the state tells us, we can move ahead. The other piece is, when we talk about flexibility. If we think about our policy regarding homeschool students. And we allow them to come in for one class or two classes or three classes. I don't know how we can be more restrictive with any other student. So if we have remote learners who want to come in for three periods of AP or music, or I don't know how we can tell them no. Or we can, you know, our homeschool kids, yes. So I just think we're going to have to be flexible, and I think that's true for all grade levels. If we have a remote student at the middle school wanting to come in for one art class, well, if they're a homeschool student, they can do it. Why wouldn't we allow our own remote learners? You know, so I think there's going to be, although we're not, we don't have a hybrid per se on the recommendation anywhere. Ultimately, we create a flexible through board policy to allow hybrids of such for individual kids.
Well, I think the hybrid is going to be a future track that we probably will use a lot more. So as time goes on and and students become familiar with working more independently. You're going to have a group of students that can move and accelerate faster, and they're going to be in a hybrid model. It's it's got to happen, you know, so you can't hold everybody moving along that same path, you know, because they're not there.
Well, you're not also, you're not, it's a system that you're managing too. You're not, I mean, constantly trying, you know, you can't offer both modalities with every class or whatever. So it's going to become, how you operationalize that is going to absolutely, whatever. The term I'm using is hyperflux. That that ultimately, people will be able to hyperflux. You know, it it actually, Dr. Schiff, it's it's we're breaking down barriers to learning. You know, if you think of it that way, we're allowing access. Access is what we need to talk about, not barriers to access.
I would just encourage the board to, if you did get a chance to see it, provide it some narrative as a background. And thank you to Mr. Travis, Tom, and also Emily for attending tonight, Mrs. Eberle and Mrs. Kirk, and to as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a wonderful meeting.
Thank you. So we have some homework to do, certainly for the secondary level. So thanks for that discussion. And our our plan is to bring something back to the board on May ten.
Is that a plan?
It is.
So you want to, you want to give a little.
Possibly, but we'll, we'll, we'll have dialogue along the way, I'm sure. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, and then our last old business item is food service contract extension. Just a quick reminder, we've talked about this at a couple of different meetings now. We apply for a waiver to allow us to do a one-year extension of food service contract at current rates. With the expectation that we would then go to a formal bid for food service next year. And there's two different motions, one is related to the contract itself, which is that a three-point-nine percent food CPI rate increase, which is standard in the contract. And then the second one is for the incremental piece related to the minimum wage that we also discussed at the last meeting.
So you made these motions, or the silly related.
Yep.
So motion to approve a one-year extension of the existing freedom of food service with earmark. In accordance with the child attorney response number seventy-one, extension waiver filed with ISB on February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Including a total A word increases three-point-nine percent for the unadjusted twelve-one in the December twenty CPI food percentage. So do you take the several?
Yes, sir. Second.
Moved in second, additional discussion. And then, Dr. Jones, this is eight, roll call please.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Mr. Catholic?
Yes.
Dr. Catula?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Lach?
Yes.
I need the second motion, please.
Motion to approve the direct cost reimbursement to earmark for the increase in labor costs associated with the one-state mandated minimum wage increase in fiscal year twenty-two. An increase to twelve dollars per hour effective January one, twenty twenty-two, based on actual hours worked up to a maximum of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five hours.
Second. Moving the second additional discussion, roll call please.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Mr. Catholic?
Yes.
Dr. Catula?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Per?
Yes.
And then on to new business, and we have a net information that work security.
Yeah, Paul's welcome. Yes, so Dr. Schiff on Monday sent me a very informative article on a school district in New York. That John held the ransom, their data was hacked. And we thought it would be a great idea, and I'm trying to update the board on what we're doing to be able to prevent some of those measures to take place. I'm going to give the board a very ten-thousand-foot overview, because I don't want to dive into exactly what we're doing, so people know how to get around it. So we're going to talk a little bit about some of the equipment we have in place, some of the procedures and protocols we have in place, where our data is, how it's, how it's stored. So I think the first thing I want to talk about is some of the hardware that that we've invested in, that the board has allowed us to invest in. If you think back to two thousand and twelve, two thousand and seventeen, we put in some infrastructure. We went with a Palo Alto firewall, which in the Gartner, you know, magic quadrant is in the top right-hand corner. It's one of the best that you can get. It's been great for us, it's how we do all of our content filtering, it keeps all the good stuff in and allows the good stuff in and out, and it keeps all the bad stuff out. To give you an idea, I ran a report all of last week and this week, we get about twenty-eight thousand hits a day. That try to get through our firewall, that is unauthorized access, to just give you an idea of how much traffic is coming back and forth. Now, that doesn't mean that all twenty-eight thousand is malicious or hackers, it's just unidentified information that's trying to get into our network. So it does a great job backing up our district. But we've also invested in the Cisco infrastructure, so all of our wireless is Cisco, all of our our routers and networkers, Cisco equipment, very secure. We run through security through its very wide space. That's in all of our buildings. So that filters, piggybacks off of the Palo Alto network. Again, that goes back to the infrastructure that we put in in two thousand and twelve, again, top right-hand quadrant with a Gartner scale. So, you know, the district's investing in quality equipment to prevent, you know, hackers or malicious intent to come into our district. Same thing with our wireless controller that allows all of our devices on the network, any BYOD devices on the network. The nice thing about our wireless controller is we we separate that traffic based on rights. So for example, you know, if I bring my district laptop in, that has access to. So for example, you know, if I bring my district laptop in, that has access to district resources. If I'm a student and I bring my personal laptop in, the only thing that device has access to is the internet. There's no access internally to any of our, any of our files, folders. It's all just internet access back and forth. They, they don't have access no matter what, and that's all based on rights, based on the device that gets impacted. Our rights, and when I say rights, that's access to files, access to information, is very user-based. So for example, the business department, they're the only people that have access to business files. We only have a couple super admin users in our district that have access to everything. But when I say that that's important is because when hackers get in and they try to replicate someone's rights, they're only gonna, worst-case scenario, hopefully, get access to that, you know, that, that group set of permissions that kinda, that kinda takes place. The nice thing is four or five years ago, we transitioned to Google. So not only are we secure internally with Active Directory, we're using Google to authenticate to a lot. Google obviously is very large. We moved all of our home drives off-site. Everything is on Google now. Everything is replicated across the world right now with Google. So you don't see a lot of Google districts that are falling into what some of these districts have fallen into, where their files are on-site, it's all Microsoft-based. You know, you look at your Apple phones, you don't get a lot of malware and you don't get a lot of hacking done on Apple phones, and that's because it's iOS-based. Microsoft is the king, that's what, that's what everybody tells us. Again, users are, our student users, our staff users, they only have rights to certain folders, certain shared drives. It's backed up nightly by Google. We use something called the Google Vault. Everything's stored in there. We can, we can restore information very quickly. As far as internal resources go, such as e-school, some of the business departments, Word and Excel documents, those are backed up nightly on our end. We, we replicate those to a, to another site in the district. So we have two sets of backups, and then you give a time of any district resource. We back up our Active Directory every single night. We run a completely virtual environment, so we don't have a set server for everything. Everything sits in a virtual world. And when I say that and why that's important is allows us, if we were to have our Git hacked or if something were to happen, we can spin up a new server and restore data very quickly. When I say quickly, within a day or two days, depending on how, the size and quantity of data that we're looking at. You know, we, we require all of our users to have eight-digit passwords. You're gonna see next month when I bring the three-year tech plan to the board, some of our recommendations on what we'd like to do to improve those passwords, such as passphrase, it's two-factor authentication. I know it sounds like that's a no-brainer, we should be doing two-factor authentication. The problem is, is that we have a lot of moving components in technology. I mean, you guys know better than anyone, over the last eight years, everything now touches tech. So, you know, Dr. Baughman gets new curriculum, there's a single sign-on portion of that with our, with, with student information. So it's not just, we can't, we can't be two-factor authentication kids all day long because of BNOA for, they have to have it on their cell phones or stuff like that. So we're looking at options and what that could look like.
So Ryan, what we're thinking about is like a single sign-on for all applications.
Yeah, so we.
Doubling down on security.
And we do that now. So we currently use single sign-on, we use clever. So yes, students' Google credentials are what they're passing through to Seesaw, which they're passing through to other, Alexia, Dreambox.
I mean, all of our apps, like, you know, Dr. Schiff would have twenty different systems he has access to, to go with like somewhat of an practice situation.
And it's currently almost set up like that. So like, and we pass our Google credentials on this, you know, it's, it's, it's very much set up like that now. SAPPA, I'm also gonna be giving an update if you heard SAPPA coming in May. It's the Student Online Privacy Protection Act, and that's basically agreements that we're entering into with our vendors that have to require that our student data is safe, secure, and only in the hands of the right people. So I'll be updating the board on that also in May and showing you the platform we purchased on where those agreements are going to sit, how we're reviewing software and so on. The sad thing is, is hacking and malicious attacks are becoming more of the norm. You, you hear about them all the time. I mean, obviously Chase got hacked a couple years ago, the Equifax breach was huge. Just a couple years ago, Rockford Public Schools was down for weeks when they got, they got held for malware. Florida schools in this article, and they get the articles in the board's report if you get a chance to read it. You know, when we talk to our vendors, the sad thing is, is they don't look at it as a matter of like, how secure, it's not a matter of if you're going to get attacked, it's a matter of when you're gonna get attacked. And then what protocols are in place to respond to that. I will tell you that network security is our top priority when we are looking at everything. School districts are very unique compared to the business world because, for example, there's certain ports on our firewall that we would, we would normally like to keep closed. But then we get, you know, a software that maybe the athletic program needs to use. So then we, then we look at, okay, we need to open this port because that's the only way it works. What does that port have access to? So that might be a port that, you know, we then redirect where it only has internet access, such as for streaming games. There's no need that port would ever have to come in and access anything internally. So we look at every piece of software and anything that's added. You know, we work with H R when a user leaves, they're deactivated immediately. So we don't have, we don't have users leaving that, that shouldn't be on the network. I think our staff does a really good job of, you know, we get a lot of mail, we get a lot of emails every day asking for click here and send these gift cards to these people. And our staff's done a really good job of knowing what's a real email and what's not. And they'll do, they do a good job of, you know, and Dr. Schiff has had a couple of these, where, where a teacher is emailing him like, did you send this to me? And he'll be like that, you know? So we've gotten a lot better. I think that's as, as we get a newer age of users that are used to seeing that stuff because it is so common. We're not having, you know, any of those issues. So we've been lucky, but I also think we've also been very diligent about how our network is set up. When we've set up our firewalls, our wireless controllers, we're using an outside vendor to do that. My network administrator is phenomenal, I'll put him up against anybody. He's been here fifteen years. He's helped design all of it. He is very, very diligent when we are looking at software and hardware products to make sure that our network is secure. He very much points out who has access to what and if they should or should not. Another thing when I bring the tech plan to the board is we're looking at restructuring our department to support more security. How our department is set up now, I wanna go to a more role-based department. I think it, it, it helps with, with security. I think it helps our end users. So you're gonna see that coming in the next month and what that would look like. But I feel like we're in a good spot, so I just wanna take, you know, a little bit of time. If anybody has any questions, we have a, we have an open scope of work with CDW that if we were to have our Git hacked, we would have them on-site within three hours. That is in place, that's been in place. I mean, May's gonna be, you're gonna hear a very lot of Ryan and May. We are bringing a new firewall after the tech plan is presented. I mean, you know, the board is, is okay with everything on that. We'll bring a new firewall as part of the digital buy grant that Mike updated the board on last month. We, after the, after the wireless controller, which is also coming to board in May, would be approved, we would run then a test, what they call a pen test, penetration test against the network. So there's a couple ways to look at that, and I've got pricing on, on all three ways. One way we can look at it is just, you know, CW has a list of tools and they would try to access our network from the outside in multiple different ways. So it kinda looks for vulnerability on, on different ways hackers that would come in. There's also an internal test that they can do that would come internally, try to find ways out that maybe some of our users are, are using. They would send a, a blank email to all of our staff, you know, that would focus on phishing and trying to get you to click on links and stuff like that. And then there's also a phone attack that they can do, that they can call some of our buildings and request information, stuff like that, just to make sure that we're secure all the way around the world. So that's something I have pricing on, and then we're looking at after the firewall and wireless controllers put into place, because we don't mind doing that if we're gonna change our two most important components. We're sticking with Palo Alto, so we're sticking with Cisco. We're just upgrading because they're four years and eight years older. All of our laptops have malicious virus scanning software on them, all of our teacher laptops, all of our Chromebooks, they're cloud-based. So you don't have to have, you don't have to run virus scanning software or anything like that on a cloud-based device, just like, you know, on your phone. So it's currently where we're at. I hope that makes you feel comfortable. Again, I, I think the board for, you know, that we've invested a sizable amount of money in, in our, in our network over the last ten years that I've been here. We've come a long way from where we were. But it's scarier because as we move on, the amount of technology that's involved in everything we do, from our learning management systems to wireless devices to the access, you heard the, the parent talk earlier, that their student was blocked from the cliff notes one time. Well, that's done on purpose, I mean, we're, we're doing that on purpose, right? So we do have a very strong content filtering in place. We have a content filtering at home for our students in place, so they're basically going through a firewall on their devices at home. But that just gives you an idea of how it's currently set up. And if you have to answer any questions that you have.
I don't think we're, it's always hard, but, you know, it's just a material we know this has happened all.
It is.
And you just have to move us, you know, to block it, and it's, it's inexpensive. It's just part of doing businesses, it's not just a school district, it's anything.
Absolutely.
So, you know, we're landing it here on top of it, and we're looking at upgrading.
We absolutely are, and it's something that we're always looking at. And, and I, I know this does not give anyone peace of mind, but the best of the best institutions and the federal government, you know, they've all been subject to these, and they have endless resources. So I do feel that we do the best that we can do. I'm very proud of my team and, and the district for what we've done. I feel very privileged that I get to manage a network that is, that has these, these tools. But again, it's just, we're trying to prepare ourselves so if we were to ever get into this event, you know, it's, it's no different than our run-high fight drills or anything like that. A little different on how we prepare for them, but if something were to ever happen, our team's goal is how quickly can we respond? Because when you read that article in Buffalo, it was really hard on the parents. They've gone on e-learning, they've gone out of school, and now all of a sudden, school has to shut down because they don't have any access to equipment. That's what we're trying to avoid, and that's what we're focused on.
Well, I think it's a collective effort. It's just, I, 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 I do think we're probably at some point, you know, data privacy, data security.
Absolutely.
I, I think the principle is perpetrating. This is, this is something that we're, you know, it's not just your team, Ryan.
No.
All of our collective, you know, everyone's collective efforts. When you talk about how did they get in, they get it from a user.
Yep.
And you say a user knows how to identify that? No, not really.
And they don't? In your right eye, I'm like.
So I mean, they take, you know, I think you're on top of a lot of the resources. Edutca is the number one ed technology. There are resources that they're providing for districts and the educational community and data. You know, I think we probably have to raise some policy around this. I mean, this is something that it's gonna take a collective effort.
Without that.
And it's just not on here, it's on all of our shoulders. And constant training as well that goes along with that. Even how do you use data? How do you make sure that, you know, you know, I, we are, we don't take perpetrating. We should, per, but it's that federal regulation which ensures student data is protected.
We're, we're actually, part of our, our student record compliance that Ryan was talking about earlier, we're incorporating a module that's called, which is that.
Yeah, so it's like, that's the code there. So it's, it's not just network security, it's not, it's data and network health and security.
Absolutely.
Student privacy.
Student privacy. It's, it's, um, it's a part of, what can be put in an email, what can't you?
Absolutely.
You can't put rights in an email.
Right. Well, we, we had discussions about that.
You know, about, but that is not seen as secure.
Correct. Yes, you are right, and, and email is probably one of the, it's some, is one of the least secure forms of communication.
You can do it within a learning management system where you have multiple assignments on it. If you can't do it through.
Yeah.
So I mean, all those things that are really important, just make sure our users also understand that, you know, as we continue to push flexibility.
Absolutely, and our network is designed to help eliminate some of those items that you're talking about. Like, we know users are accidentally going to click on a link, or accidentally going to click on a pop-up. And that's where we're building the backend. And once that click is initiated, how do we stop it before it gets out? How does it go into, you know, a black hole so that that request is never found? And it's very similar to gaggle. You know, when student A sends student B an inappropriate message, student B never receives it, that's kinda how the network is designed. If something isn't, is, is not right, and then, and our firewall sees that, it's just pushed off into null and land and it never happens. So we do take that into account, and I agree with you, and the training's going to be never-ending. I mean, it's going to continue forever. But we do try to take proactive measures in stopping that when it happens.
Thank you, Ryan.
Okay, next item is IHSA membership.
As we were asking the board for approval, so we can, we can be, it's moving forward.
Motion to renew the membership for the Illinois High School Association and to adopt and abide by the Constitution, by laws, terms and conditions, and administrative procedures, guidelines and policies of the Illinois High School Association for the year of July first, two thousand twenty-one through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second. Moving inside additional plans, oh, let's do roll plans, please. Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Catula?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Per?
Yes.
All right, next we have.
They have a GoFundMe page right now.
What does? Are you interested?
I E S A.
I E S A.
I E S A.
We have, yeah.
Does Allen, do you have any communication with them or any?
So, was it okay? That we now, um, eight months ago, but going on a case where I have not, I, I think it's still, it's still a code.
But nothing for renewal yet from them?
No, no.
Okay.
Next agenda item is the school board election results.
This is just informational as part of, before we go to the open ballot. And we wanted to share the election results, just to have that on record.
And then our last item is the open ballot, so. We have Bob, Dr. Brenner, Dr. Schumacher, and Mr. Sefner.
You know, we do have the, the front of you, just for a quick note version.
Based on the information received from the Kendall County Clerk's Office and the King County Clerk's Office, the Board of Education of the School District One One Pride finds that as the results of the election held on April sixth, two thousand twenty-one, the following candidates were elected to their respective offices members of the Board of Education and of the Yorkville Community and School District One One Pride to serve for consecutive, four years consecutively. Dr. Robert Brenner, Dr. Sean Schumacher, and Mr. Jason Sefner. So maybe we'll just, we'll do the first individually and then we'll, we'll collectively do the rest. So, Dr. Brenner?
Hi, Robert Brenner. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of Yorkville, consolidated District One Fifteen in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
Dr. Schumacher?
I, Sean Schumacher, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of Yorkville, CUSD One Fifteen in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability. I, Jason Sefner, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of Yorkville, One Fifteen in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois to the best of my ability.
Right, and then as a group, as a group, write the rest.
I further. Respect the tax benefits interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school's district assets. I shall not urge or respect or fear expression of the opinion of our fellow members and others who receive and hearing of the board or are studying the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize the board and their essence and legal authority as individual and decisions determined by majority vote at the Board of Education. I shall, I have adjourned decisions of the board while retaining the right to see changes and such decisions to reflect their own charter. As part of the Board of Education, I accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of our students in the school district. I shall also afford extensive participation in the community in accordance with the rules of high outcomes and seventh quarters for your ability to use your CUSD One Fifteen. I shall assist in establishing a structure and environment designed which ensures students have the opportunity to do their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall ensure the issue assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as a patient, key advocate of the head of high students in our community school to advance the vision of our community's U S D One Fifteen. And I shall also, together with the student. And we, this school district, or our college, in addition to the board's crazy, awesome. Also, excellent service to students in the area of active skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal.
Next place.
Congratulations. Any other additional news, celebrations from the night?
Uh, just I put a number of them in there for the board. Um, just congratulations again that the taste of of Yorkville culture matters. We sent a poor email over the weekend, so if you get a chance at some point to look through that. Um, great, great efforts by by many different people. Um, so in my camp and the members of the V bag, the language of Yorkville, just a great community effort. Um, you see some things at Circle Center there, virtual music concert tomorrow night. Uh, Grandma Zer's having their drive through art show in food truck in seven five four. And then I said, I put a couple pictures of Meredith Melvin um, in in the board back in forty for her military duty. Um, and it was a picture of her getting her, being coined for her leadership success. Not sure when Meredith will be back with us, but she certainly has been serving our country and and helping out with some of the COVID efforts. And a lot going on at the the high school as we prepare for uh, May and seniors. And then we have a couple invitations for top ten and graduation at your tables. So we are set to go into NIU on uh, May twenty-first. And hopefully it'll be a beautiful sunny, cool day. So that's at six thirty. Now you see some of our accomplishments there. They've shared robotics competition, um, or or some of our athletic programs have finished recently. My great seniors are seasonally to have kids get a little sense of the taste of normalcy this year. Uh, great homecoming efforts by everybody across all grade levels and the parade and festivities that occurred. And then we start our AP testing next week, I believe. So it would be race to the finish line.
Any executive session tonight?
After the next meeting will be. For your organization meeting.
So we need to close this meeting and then we have to go through our reorganization.
Correct.
And motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? And you both, you adjourned. Then we have to move on to our second meeting. This is our annual reorganization meeting. And you're up. Dr. Brenner?
Here.
Dr. Katula?
Yep.
Mr. Kazewitz?
Here.
Dr. Schumacher?
Here.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Here.
Uh, and then we need to appoint a president pro temp.
Well, may I, how about Mr. Kazewitz?
Thank you so much.
And then we need to appoint a secretary pro temp.
So.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Kazewitz, take over.
Nomination then the election of a board president. I need a nomination for a president.
And that would be Dr. Brooks.
Second. Are there any further nominations? Any further nominations? Any nominations? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Congratulations. I'm going to award vice president nomination for. I'd like to nominate Dr. Brent.
Second.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those. Congratulations, bud.
Oh.
I can't for board secretary. So I hear a nomination.
And I miss shields.
Okay.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those. Motion carry. Congratulations. Designated duties and I should record monthly board meetings. I think you all have that meeting schedule in front of you that we sent on prior to that. We're a motion to prove that.
I move to prove the designated dates and times for regular monthly meetings. The dates of the adjourned and special meetings are to be established as needed in accordance with state law. The board may change a regular meeting date by giving ten days.
Second, second. Any further discussion?
Was there any any discussion on changing time? I have next given from parents as I asked them. And it was questioning had risen. So I want to make sure that the board wants to maintain the seven o'clock time.
Change. We've discussed this before and we moved it off because it's later. But most everybody's working. Couldn't change it that much.
And then we will work, uh, captain, something else to look at your availability in July. Is the board to come together for the morning or after?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those. Motion carry. Clear a vacancy due to failure to elect. And a motion.
Motion to declare a board member seat vacant for failure to elect and direct the superintendent to notify the regional superintendent of vacancy within five days.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those. Motion carry. Mention policy number two point seven oh regarding uh, coming about of a framework of finding vacancies.
Motion pursuant to board policy two point two four oh to suspend board policy two point seven oh on vacancies for purposes of appointing Dr. Eric Katula to the vacant board member seat at our board meeting this evening for a two-year term.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those. Congratulations, Gary. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We'll be quick.
We know the motion to uh.
This will be official.
Official motion for Eric. Can I motion on that?
Yeah. Motion to appoint Dr. Garrett Katula to fill the vacant board member seat effect immediately to the next regular board election in April twenty twenty-three.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those. Motion carry. Your total office. Yes, you do.
Hi, Eric Katula, I swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education of Yorkville CUSD One Fifteen. Constitution, United States Constitution, the state laws of the state of my best my. Further swear. As I respect taxpayers' interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school districts assets, I should encourage and respect free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others seeking here at the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that the board member has no legal authority as an individual and that decisions can be made only by majority vote at a public board meeting. I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions. Rethink construction channels. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility for my role in the equitable and quality education of every student in the school district and should foster the board extensive participation in the community formally pools by house guns and set the course for Yorkville CUSD One Fifteen. I shall assist in establishing a structure and environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and or community schools to advance the vision of Yorkville CUSD One Fifteen. And I should strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead the school district toward fulfilling the vision the board has created, foster excellence for every student in the areas of active skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal confidence.
Next, now we are assigning the Board of Education, the the various committees. You have them in front of you there. Are there any changes or alterations? If not, do we need a motion on that?
I move we assign Board of Education members to represent the designated committees as noted below.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those. Motion carry. Legal counsel.
Motion to appoint the general legal counsels of Hodges, Lacy, Eisenheimer, Frederick, and Conne, and the local attorneys and or other attorneys whose expertise is needed in particularly the specialized areas of assistance.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those. Motion carry. Recording board secretary.
Motion to appoint the superintendent's administrative assistant as the recording board secretary.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those. Motion carry. What are your requests?
Motion to appoint the executive director of finance and business services and the superintendent's administrative assistant at the district. Boy of officers.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those. Motion carry. We have the authorization agent and alternate agent for Illinois Municipal Retirement Funds.
Motion to appoint the bookkeeper payroll and human resources assistant as the authorized agents for I M R F. The executive director of finance and business services is the alternate authorized agent.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those. Motion carry. Title nine discrimination officer.
Move to appoint Dr. Nick Baughman and Mrs. Malina Lasty as the title nine discrimination officer.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those. Motion carry. When the budget preparation.
Motion to assign the executive director of finance and business services as the individual responsible to prepare the this year twenty-two budget.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those. Motion carry. And then treasurer.
Motion to appoint the Yorkville CUSD One Fifteen executive director of finance and business services as the treasurer.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those. Motion carry. Treasurer's bond.
Motion to approve the school treasurer's bond to be set at seventeen million eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those. Motion carry. Designation of signatures.
It's true.
Motion to designate the treasurer, executive director of finance and business services, and superintendent to sign checks for the district funds, interest fund, and activity fund.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those. Motion carry.
Motion to designate the superintendent, treasurer, executive director of finance and business services, and the reporting board secretary as authorized personnel to enter the lockbox at First National Bank.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those. Motion carry. Uh, district newspapers.
Motion to designate the Kendall County Record as the district one fifteen newspaper and designate the Aurora Beacon News, the Chicago Tribune, as the backup newspaper.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It already worked well.
I know.
I was just going to say, yeah, we have a sort of a hybrid type of online newspaper now that started off small, but it's grown a lot now. Yeah. And if there's a group of people that read that, it's opposed to some of the others. So whether at least we should consider putting information in that form.
Well, in the talk, it really kind of says that often it's really a media, there's multiple media outlets that content is distributed. It needs to be.
I think this really gets the heart of who we have it and we have messages that have to go out. You know, what's our primary outlet for that to occur for our district one fifteen?
Why? That's why, you know, bringing this up because there's a, there's a good segment that reads the outline bit. Not really all the lines, but. It's just something.
Then you're going to have to look at the credibility of what they're saying is what their editorial process is. So if you have a current, well-respected, well-known establishment of doing it, bring in another one, demonstrate those kinds of legitimacy and integrity and those kind of things if we're going to use them as a representing our works.
I I agree. And it's it's just the fact that I think we should be considering. We would do. But I think at least we have to look at other methods of distributing. Since we had word that a lot of the people distribute never gets right. So at least put it up.
Any further discussion? Now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those. Motion carry. We have makes.
Motion approved First National Bank of Omaha and Illinois School District Liquid Assets Funds as depositors for district funds. 第一部 First National Bank of Omaha, Harris Bank, and Illinois School District Liquid Assets Funds and Institutions Recommended by PMA Financial as depositories for Investments and approved that a little bit of local banks be used for the source of short-term loans.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those. Motion carry. Any more comments? And I think we need to go into executive session. You're ready.
Motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing employment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel of the public body who have hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body for guest legal counsel for the public side to determine its validity five I L C S one twenty slash two C one. Purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body included meeting itself for the purpose of discussion whether a particular person should be acquired. I I C S one twenty slash two C five.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those. Motion carry. On exact execution. Then we have five minutes or so.
Ms. Yu, I'll call you.
Sorry?
We'll call you.
Okay, thanks.
The motion to adjourn.
Second.
I agree.
Real call.
Real call. Gary.
Yep.
John. Bob.
Yes.
Uh, Jason.
Yes.
Ashley. Lynn.
Here.
Oh, you got it.
I agree.